Illegisaturum in Guam when I come to order. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt today's session agenda. However, I make the motion that items 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 15, 16, 18, and 19 be waived, that we go to roll call, then proceed to motions.
Any objections? Roll call, please.
Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Present.
Senator Ascoldon. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Resfischo. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniculus. Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Wanta. Mr. Speaker, there is a quorum.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we excuse any senator not present for today's session.
Any objection? Thank you very much. I guess I should probably set the stage. As many of you know, there's scheduled to be an election on Saturday in the municipality of Aggett. And all of you know that we are now in condition three, and we'll be moving to condition four, I mean, two, at 4:00 this afternoon. Don't know how to do this. Title III, Chapter 5, Section 5103 of the Government Code reads as follows. "In Magatlahe in Guam, with the advice and consent of Illegisaturum, upon the recommendation of the Guam Election Commission, may postpone any such election therein for such time as they may deem necessary, but at no event shall any postponement exceed thirty days from the date from which the election should have been held." I've been advised that the Election Commission this morning made a recommendation signed by the vice -- by the chairperson and the vice chairperson of the Election Commission, asking the governor to postpone the election. And the governor has since transmitted to us and received a few minutes ago a letter. I'll ask the Majority Leader to read that.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Speaker. That's correct. The governor writes, "Dear Acting Speaker pursuant to 5103 of Chapter 5, Title III, GCA, it is requested that the legislature concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone the special election for the office of the Aggett Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16, 2015. Attach the letter from the Guam Election Commission with its recommendation. So having received this letter from the governor, I move that it be placed in the legislative concurrence file."
Any objections?
And, Mr. Speaker, before we move to the concurrence file, I've been requested that I make a motion that any resolutions introduced today that's congratulatory, commendatory in nature, that all senators be co-sponsors, and that the senators work with the clerk and the legal counsel in the preparation of these resolutions.
Any objection?
At this time, I request that we proceed to the legislative concurrence file.
I believe Senator Uggan had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to all of our colleagues here. Mr. Speaker, just reading the request by the governor, and certainly appreciate the timeliness of his submission, and he's -- it is requested that the legislature concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone the special election for the office of the Aggett Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16. I did receive or have a personal or direct conversation with the mayor of Aggett, Mr. Speaker, over the course of the last hour and a half, and she has requested due consideration on the part of the body, of myself also, that we consider allowing the postponement of the election because of the impending storm, but to have it sooner than the recommendation of the Election Commission, which was scheduled for June 6. So based on that, Mr. Speaker, I do have serious reservations in terms of recognizing that, in fact, the election needs to be postponed for the safety of the people of Aggett, but also recognizing that the mayor, based on recommendations and support from her community, has requested that this body consider, rather than having the election postponed until the 6th of June, that it be held a week earlier. She even went as far as saying, if not Saturday next week, then even Monday, which is a holiday, Memorial Day, so that it would allow for a much sooner election to be held prior to the recommendation of the Election Commission. I did reach out to the Election Commission, and I asked them if by any chance the executive director, if she would consider and the commission would consider moving the date up. And she said, because the commission had already rendered that decision, and had transmitted the letter to the chief executive, to the governor of Guam, that they remain with that particular recommended date. So I have to state for the record, Mr. Speaker, and she -- I had to share that information on behalf of the mayor of Aggett, and also many of her residents who have contacted her, and they really have stated that they would like to have it sooner, rather than the date that's recommended by the Election Commission. So I still have reservations in terms of how I would finally vote on this, recognizing that there is an impending storm, and safety is paramount when it comes to the residents of Aggett, as well as our entire island community. So please, for the record, Mr. Speaker, I have shared my reservation, and acknowledge that the mayor, who is the representative of the entire village of Hoggett, has put in a request for consideration by this body that a sooner date be adopted, rather than the one recommended by the Election Commission. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the previous speaker raises an interesting point, as he relates a concern expressed him by the Aggett mayor. And this point kind of puts this body in a dilemma, because the only thing we're here to do this afternoon is pursuant to statute, is to concur or not concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to do two things, to postpone the election, and they are the ones who set the special election for June 6. And given the statute that you just cited, it says that the governor shall -- this shall happen with advice and consent. I'm not entirely sure that we're in a position to amend the Guam Election Commission's recommendation, so the vote up, the vote will be one vote, either vote up or vote down. However, not voting for this legislative concurrence would mean that the special election will happen this Saturday, and we know, Mr. Speaker, what is going to happen this Saturday, God forbid, we are going to be in condition two, as you mentioned, at 4:00 this afternoon. And this body is particularly responding to a concern raised by the Guam Election Commission, and providing a statutory mechanism to be able to make this election postponed. However, I don't believe we're in a position to amend the Guam Election Commission's recommendation, so this vote again would be in totality, right?
Thank you. And let me just read for the record again. Section 5103, postponement of election. "If for serious cause resulting from any natural phenomenon, or act of God, or a public enemy, it becomes reasonably impossible to hold any election duly scheduled on Guam as a whole or in any municipality or municipal division. In Magatlahe in Guam, with the advice and consent of Illegisaturum, the legislature, upon the recommendation -- upon the recommendation of the commission, may postpone any such election therein for such time as they may deem necessary, but in no event shall postponement exceed thirty days from the date when such election should have been held." I would be willing to take a short break to consult legal counsel, and to see whether or not we can amend the date. It's a recommendation, but it's advice and consent. It's -- I'm going to vote to confirm someone, but only to serve on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Either you're going to have him serve as the director of the department, but not on the dates that I want him or don't want him or her to serve. It's advice and consent.
No objection till the recess.
Recession. The legislature's back in session. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we just emerged from this several-minute-long recess, where we certainly recognize the concerns raised by some of our members with respect to the Election Commission setting the date for this special election. However, the date doesn't bode well with the Aggett mayor, and we're -- this body finds itself to be in a dilemma, but it's very clear that our role in this case is basically just advice and consent. So the advice of the body is that we treat this like a legislative concurrence, as we do with all appointments to boards and commissions and director positions. So again, at this time, I renew my motion that this letter from the governor that's been placed in the legislative concurrence be placed in the voting file. And it's one vote. It's one vote to confirm or not to confirm, or in this case, to consent or not to consent.
Any objection to placing this in the voting file?
No objection.
Mr. Majority Leader, did you wish to show hands or a roll call?
I guess show of hands. The body's asking for a show of hands, and it's -- we're actually at a roll call, Mr. Speaker. We treat this like we do with director.
Directorship.
Yeah.
All right. Clerk. You wish to speak? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, recognizing as far as the concurrence, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to, like my colleague from Aggett, please, to express my concern with regards to the process. And I recognize and I understand the process. My concern is not the process itself that we're doing, it was what happened to get to this process. I too received a phone call from the mayor, and expressing her concern with regards to the date that has been set as the recommendation by the Election Commission. And I must say, too, that it was concerning with me with regards to how the Election Commission was able to set this date without consultation, or much less a discussion with her, on whether or not this date can actually fit. I would think that something, and granted, this is, and we're talking about a special election, that's just affecting one municipality, but one would think the prudent thing to do was to have a discussion with the mayor of that village, to see whether this can actually fit. And in this case, that wasn't, that wasn't, that didn't occur. And so her objection, or her desire to basically move that date from what is being recommended by the Election Commission, and what is up before us for concurrence, actually falls, you know, on the same day that she's having a signature event for her village. So she's got very good, and I think that's a valid concern. You know, from my understanding, she would like to be able to have the elections sooner than what was recommended, so that she does have a vice mayor that she can work with for the, at the signature event. So I recognize, Mr. Speaker, that the matter before us is just a matter of concurrence, that based on legis -- the way the law, the statute is written, our hands are tied with regards to changing the date. But I must say that based on what was recommended as the date, and is, that that date is now before us for concurrence, I must object to that. And my objection will be no so noted in the vote that I'm going to be taking, not because, and I recognize that and I recognize that if not, it could be, I don't want it to be perceived that I would believe, I think that the vote should go on on Saturday. No, but I understand the reason why we're moving this date for the election, because of the storm. But I think that it's prudent, and I have to say for the record, why I am going to have to vote the way I'm going to have to vote, is the process that it took to come about with the recommended date. Had that been done, had Putin's been exercised, there probably wouldn't have been any contention to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. As long as I've opened it up, anybody else wish to? All right. If not, Senator Adder.
You know, Mr. Speaker, I guess there's the old saying about the position you take depends on what side of the table you're on. And on the one hand, certainly the village itself and the mayor would like to have it on a date different from what the Election Commission has recommended. And I'm sure, for whatever reasons, they want it, you know, on a different date, and I'm sure that their reasons for wanting that different date are very valid, and it's very valid to that particular village. But then again, I have to take in good, that the Election Commission acted in good faith in coming up with the date that they have recommended, and, but we don't know the details of that. But I have to give them the benefit of the doubt, and I've never really had any reason to believe that we have an irresponsible commission there who would just, you know, make decisions without really weighing it out and coming up with a decision that was best for purposes of conducting an election. And for us to, you know, even consider making those changes at this point without knowing really, you know, without having a public hearing and hearing the details of why, you know, certain dates were picked, I certainly would not want to get into that situation. And I would, in my case, I would basically stay within the parameters of what our responsibility is, and that is to either concur or not concur with the recommendation that was made by the Election Commission and by the governor. And so, until, you know, we don't have the luxury of time to do otherwise, but I'm going to have to stay within the parameters of what the law calls for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator? If not, Mr. Majority Leader, we're in the voting file. Madam Clerk, please call the votes.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, excused. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused.
I hate to do this, but it's been brought to my attention that we did not announce what we were voting on or read it into the record, so. We're going to read it into the record so there's absolutely nothing, and it can't be questioned what we voted on.
On the request of the Governor of Guam that the legislature concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone this special election for the office of the Agit Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16, 2015.
There are two things that you have before you. There's a letter from the Election Commission, reads, "Hafade, Mr. Governor, pursuant to Section 3 GCA 5103, the Guam Election Commission, GEC, respectfully recommends the postponement of special election for Agit Vice Mayor to Saturday, June 6, 2015, due to the weather forecast predicting the arrival of typhoon Dolphin. Please let us know if you require additional information. Sijus Maasi for your continued support. Signed, Jennifer Cavilkidwa, Vice Chairperson, Alice M. Tyran, Chairperson." The letter had a provision for approved or disapproved. Neither one was checked. It was signed, and the governor wrote at the bottom, "Concur," and dated his signature. That letter from the Election Commission was accompanied by a cover letter from the office of the governor wherein he writes, "Request for legislative concurrence on the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone this special election for the office of the Agit Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16, 2015. Dear Acting Speaker, pursuant to 5103, Chapter 5, Title III, Guam Code Annotated, it is requested that the legislature concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone the election for the office of Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16. Attached is the letter from the Election Commission with its recommendation." All right.
Point of order?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, we don't have to do another roll call vote. I move that the vote that we just took be reflective of what was just read and that be ratified.
Any objection? And the vote, give me the voting sheet. Eleven ayes, two nays. The legislature has provided its advice and consent to the governor's request that the legislature concur with the Guam Election Commission's recommendation to postpone the special election for the office of Agit Vice Mayor scheduled for May 16, 2015, to the new date of July, I mean, June the 6, 2015. Okay? Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
There being no objection, please be safe, everybody.